Good evening and welcome to the November 8, 2001 Planning Commission meeting for the city of Yukon. Please rise for invocation, followed by flag salute. My Commissioner Gerba. May Father, we thank you for the ability to gather here freely and discuss the affairs of the city of Yukon. May we do so with wisdom said from you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Here.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Enmark?
Commissioner Gerba?
Here.
Commissioner Geis?
Here.
As for the record, we also have City Attorney Roger Reinhardt and City Right, our City Planner, Mitchell Horton, and Kathy Johnson from Development Services. Hope everyone has had time to look over the minutes from the August 9 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Caring that, could I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
Any visitors in the audience that would like to address a non-agended item? This is your chance to speak. Seeing none, item three, to hear request by David M. Box on behalf of the applicant developer Ashton Gray LLC for deferred preliminary plat that was waiting for a zoning resolution located at 200 North Yukon Parkway, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Hi. Surprise, I'm back.
Welcome back.
I've had such a history with this one, I thought I'd lead out on this. This item will seem familiar to you. It first came to you back in January of this year as a application for a rezone and a PUD. At that time, the application was denied partially because of some errors that were included in the staff report. As it went up to City Council, they remanded it back to Planning Commission. We redid the staff report, we corrected the errors. The application was once again denied, went back to City Council where it was approved. During this time, the application for the preliminary plat had been tabled. It was not heard, it was not voted on. So that is the application that you are seeing tonight is just for the preliminary plat. It has been reviewed by staff, including City Engineer. The TEs that you see, we have received a revised plat, which I believe you have been given, and that takes care of TEs 1 through 4. TE number 5 is an informational TE for the applicant as they go down the road. With that, staff is recommending approval of this application with your review and...
Yes. On the current plat?
Yes.
We have two Lot 1s, two Lot 2s, two Lot 3s, and two Lot 4s.
Two blocks.
They're just different blocks?
Yes.
Okay.
On Lot 3, at the bottom of your sheet, you'll see the Block 1 designation, and then on Lot 2, up above Ashton Lane, you'll see the Block 2 designation.
And the only other addition was the landowners of the surrounding?
And there were some notes that have been placed on there per the City Engineer and a fire hydrant that was relocated in order to accommodate a future 12-inch waterline.
For this, oh, just for general use, not for, just for this, a 12-inch line just for this development, that's for the whole, 12-inch would be for the whole area?
Right.
Alright, that sounds, okay. Also, is there any, is the common area a drainage easement the same as it was in the first plat? As far as...
As far as the size or the location?
Both.
The location, yes, I don't believe that it's the same.
Okay. I'll have those things committed to memory, so. Any other questions for staff?
None.
Commissioner, Commissioner Geis in deep thought down there here. Okay. Alright, thank you. Applicant have any presentation?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Kendall Dillon is with me, he's the civil engineer for the project. It is worth noting that the plat you have before you is a mirror of what was submitted as part of the PUD, so it matches up with that. The corrections that Cindy had identified, we went ahead and made those, resubmitted to staff, I believe this morning, so they should be in possession of everything. Again, it's complying with the code, complying with the PUD that we ultimately got approved. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
On the, I was reading through on number 2 here on the zoning ordinance when we talked about the R2 and the different coverages on that. Underneath, it says, "All proposed lots will have to meet the above residential lot requirements and/or any alternative requirements approved through the proposed PUD." The proposed PUD would allow 10-foot rear yard setbacks and lot coverage of 60%. Is that represented on here, the 10-foot rear yard setbacks and the 60% lot coverage?
So, that'll be done through the building permit, so we don't show structures on the plat, we're just designating lots and blocks.
It just doesn't have lot coverage.
Correct. But at the time that we submit for permits, we'll have to show compliance with that portion of the PUD.
I meant to refresh my memory, we've been through this several times, is it, is it under roof or slab that we do the, you don't have to give your address?
When we're talking about lot coverage, we talk about what's under roof. Impervious pavements or impervious surfaces is a different thing, that's not included in our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. In this, it also talks about the offset of the driveways, and these are offset from the one that's across the street from Yukon Crossings. Can you speak to that or why it's not in line with it?
Yeah. So, I think the staff did a pretty good job of explaining that if we were to actually do that, it would create a less optimal spacing, and so that as proposed, the plat provides an acceptable solution. So, to meet it means that we're putting it closer or further from other drives. So, as designed, at least from the engineering comments, it believed, they believed it to be an acceptable solution based upon creating less than optimal design if we were to move it north or south.
So, why would it not be optimal if it lined up with the drive across the street?
Because then it's getting closer to other drives on our same side of the street.
That are on the same side?
Yes, sir.
Namely, which one?
The church, I believe, is to our south, you have a daycare to the north, so you have uses that certain periods of time generate, you know, high volumes of traffic, so, you know, the engineering comments are that by moving it north or south, we create less than optimal distancing created between the proposed drive and existing commercial drive. So, as designed, the plat provides an acceptable solution. And again, so it is worth noting, those comments were in place at the time of the PUD, and this does mirror the master development plan map that was approved through the PUD.
Council?
Is that the one that the council, the PUD, the council approved?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the beginning of Rosewood would be north of this entire drive?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Rosewood's on the west side, though, isn't it?
We're on the...
Yeah, Rosewood's on the west.
But it's well past Yukon Crossings, right? And it's well past the daycare, too?
It's the next thing, it's the very next thing.
The next one on the west. Well, what's, I'd be curious what the distance is between the drives, then, if they were optimal, as to me, because we've come across this before in other instances where, you know, we needed to line up the drives.
Yeah, we actually voted over here where the Dutch Brothers is going in, we actually had them move the drives to be...
In line.
In line with the other ones. So, we had to set that precedent on that.
For the record, Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll. It would, so, north of us is the daycare. It would be, the current drive is about 302 feet from it. The one to the south is Live Church, so it's 192 from it. So, obviously, the north drive, if you look on every day, that peak that's produced from our development as far as traffic capacities go, they're kind of hitting the same time as the daycare, whereas the church, you basically have the peak occurring on a Sunday, which is different than a residential. So, the thought is twofold, one, it's better since your code reads that on the same side, they're supposed to be spaced 500 feet apart, but obviously, given the frontage that we have, there's not a place to meet the code, right? So, you have that in your code, but you also have 125 foot of offset, so we can't meet one of them. I think from a logical and engineering standpoint, what we decided to do was to slide it to the south, because that gets it further away from the daycare, so that on the peak hour capacity, when you're looking at the same, then it's a little bit further away from that drive as opposed to the church, if that makes sense. And so, there's plenty of offset, so that we don't have to try to look at crossover, them trying, you know, and for starters, we've only got 12 duplexes, so there's not going to really be much of a demand, somebody trying to go into Yukon Crossing. So, if you weigh all those things together, there's also a little bit of a drainage component. If you look at the drainage that's coming underneath Garth Brooks Boulevard and how we're having to intercept it, it functions better from an engineering standpoint and a traffic management to have it offset to the south. And I think that's what's reflected in the staff report, so hopefully that makes sense.
Very clear. Thank you.
That's, that, and sorry, just one, so that would be all based off, if you kept the same number of lots that you have in there, if you were to reduce the number of lots by one, would you be able to, would the drive be able to be moved in, in accordance that would fit better in there, or?
No, I think that's just, in terms of the discussion that we're having and trying to separate drives, regardless, I think it's better for all those considerations to still have it offset to the south.
Mitchell, is there a, the cost is extraordinary, but is there a timetable on paper for four leaning Yukon Parkway? Even if it's not feasible, is there a written plan somewhere for that?
We do have it on one of our wants. The problem is, is that wants are too much, or needs are too much. It was on the ACOG project, we were trying to get that back on ACOG's projects to see about funding, so we're working on that because the significant cost of the storm drain that's required to run basically from almost 66 all the way to Wagner, and the size of it, that's one of the big problems.
Okay. Alright. I mean, the storm drain is, it's like a million just for the drain?
It was, I think it was way more than that because of the size. But it is something we're trying to program back into ACOG.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience or the commissioners? Could I have somebody read the draft motion, please?
Yeah, I'll take it. "In the case of the application for a preliminary plat submitted by David M. Box on behalf of Ashton Gray LLC and F. Berry Tap, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that the preliminary plat of Ashton Place be recommended to the City Council for approval with the following additional conditions. Number one, the applicant shall note the location and names of adjacent subdivisions and the owners of adjoining parcels of unsubdivided land. Number two, provide 15-foot building limit line, drainage easement, and utility easement along Block 1, Lot 1, and..."
I don't want to interrupt you, but those have already been put into the plat that's before you, items 1 through 4?
Okay. Gotcha. "Number five, the storm sewer connecting to the existing roadway culvert will be coordinated using planned development to accommodate future roadway."
You agree with all five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second? Could you read, I saw a requirement, read it once again, please?
So, number five?
No, the motion.
Oh, just repeat the motion?
Re-read the motion.
Okay. "In the case of the application for a preliminary plat submitted by David M. Box on behalf of Ashton Gray LLC and F. Berry Tap, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that the preliminary plat of Ashton Place be recommended to the City Council for approval with the following additional conditions. The only one that was not included is number five, the storm sewer connecting to the existing roadway culvert will be coordinated during planned development to accommodate future roadway."
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Hearing no second, the item is off the table. Motion, please. You need to do business? No comments on item 3?
No, should I? I believe it already's man, I can confirm it.
You need to do business in staff?
I didn't.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have to action on this. You gotta take some kind of action, up or down, or sideways, or whatever.
As the recommending body, you need to either approve it, to approve, recommend approval or recommend denial.
Well, since the chair is not allowed to second.
The motion would not even like for a second, so we need another motion on the floor.
Yeah, we can, we can change the motion.
Chairman, it is a public meeting, so your discussion needs to be public. Can we have a motion to table? Do you have a basis for that?
May I ask the basis for, since this is the plat, this is, you know, this isn't zoning, the use is 100% allowed by law based upon the ordinance that passed this. Is there a technical matter within the plat that this fails to be agreeable with the commission?
Well, and you're kind of familiar with, initially, there was some objections to the rezoning and the specifics that there were issues with this type of development in that location. You know, if you go back through our previous meetings, that was fairly apparent, and those reasons still exist.
Those reasons no longer exist legally, because legally duplex zoning is on this site pursuant to an ordinance passed by the governing body of this city.
But we still, basically, we're just essentially giving what we feel is in the best interest of Yukon as far as our recommendations to the council.
But a plat is a technical matter. It's X's and O's, it's not a subjective look at whether or not the use is appropriate. That has been decided.
Do you want to read the motion again?
Read it one more time. "In the case of the application for a preliminary plat submitted by David M. Box on behalf of Ashton Gray LLC and F. Berry Tap, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that the preliminary plat of Ashton Place be recommended to the City Council for approval with the following additional condition. The storm sewer connecting to the existing roadway culvert will be coordinated during planned development to accommodate future roadway."
A second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
No.
Commissioner Geis?
No.
No. And Commissioner Enmark is absent.
So, you've, you still, I mean, do you want to make a motion to deny it? Is that what, is that what you want to do? So far, all you've done, there's no recommendation that goes to them at this point, simply a, it failed to recommend it.
That's really all we could, I mean, this is a recommending body.
I understand that, but they're gonna, in my experience, your council expects a recommendation from you. You've just, a motion to approve it failed. I would think they would expect a motion to deny, if that's your...
Deadlock, essentially.
I don't remember that ever happening.
Well, you got a tie vote, so we're at, so you can't have a tie, is what we're trying to do. We have, that's why we always have a third person.
So, what's the code say for ties, then?
You vote again, quote normally do. That's what the attorney's asking you to do, look at it, if you're going to deny it, deny it.
But if there is a denial, there needs to be a basis for denial.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That would come from the no vote.
Part of my basis, I asked the question about, yes, I understand that for this preliminary plat that is provided, that that drive can't be moved or that's optimal, but that's based on the, that this is the number of lots you wanted and the different things like this. It doesn't mean that this whole project couldn't be redone to where that drive could be moved, if that means a loss of lot or different things like that. Also, I also am concerned over the different, the lot coverage and those things that, I know that comes later on PUD, on the, so, I mean, that's...
So, in terms of lot, the lot coverage is not at issue today?
Okay. Right, no, I understand.
The lot coverage was set by ordinance.
That's why I gave my drive, that's a concern for me.
Understood, I would just point to, your engineers are telling you that to move it, even if we lose a lot, to move it creates a less optimal distancing.
Less optimal, but you have less traffic coming out of there if you have a reduction in the number of houses.
Well, but it's a number of houses, but it's also a function of separation between drives, 12 lots versus 11 lots.
I get that, but the reason we said that the number of drive, or that the distance in drives mattered is because of the amount of traffic that was going to be coming in and out of there.
And we can talk about numbers, in terms of numbers generated by 12 lots versus 11 lots in a duplex development, it is absolutely insignificant. I mean, there's no basis from numbers to say that moving the drive makes a difference. Again, your engineers tell you otherwise. Your engineers tell you it's less optimal.
They say this is acceptable, is what they...
Well, they say moving it north or south is less optimal.
And they say would make it acceptable.
No, no, no. As designed, it's acceptable. Moving it, less optimal, as designed, acceptable.
I was just giving my reason, that was the reason I stated. Thank you.
Are we gonna have a motion?
Well, we're doing the reasons, yeah. First thing is a rationale for people voting. Well, even though it was a tie vote, I mean, the reason I voted, Jess, I think with this piece of land, it is less than five acres. The drainage easement really has to be where it is. I don't see any way to reconfigure the drainage easement. The storm sewer and the existing culvert are going to be a significant cost to begin with, to work with the city and to bring that in line. And I think on, on five acres, if we built single-family houses, we would have, you know, nowadays, quarter acre west streets, we, I think we would have the, almost the same number of cars if we had R1. I mean, I know we're not talking about zoning tonight, but I think the difference between R1 and R2 and a five-acre plot is a house or two. Now, I know that we have two driveways per, so we're really talking about 48 cars at American Lifestyle, but I think compared to the, what do we have across the street, 72 structures?
96.
Oh, counting the single family?
No, that was just the duplexes. The single family are 72.
96 households or 96 buildings?
96 households.
Okay, so 96, so, it's a lot more coming from the other side of the street. If we were still talking about zoning, we'd be talking about zoning, but that ship has sailed, it's zoned R2. And I, and the council vote is on record, and I don't know what the vote was, but if it was a majority, it really doesn't matter.
Well, you know, I'd like to speak on that, too, because the reality is, is they didn't support what we said, and we are in this position because of their decision. I also think that with the drives, that is important with traffic, as is important to our comprehensive plan in us as well as the board, because we've voted that way in the past. My words were misconstrued in the council meeting, so therefore, you know, I wanted to stay quiet tonight, but I believe that Mr. Engineer here gave a good explanation as to why the drive's closer to Live Church than it is to the daycare. And I'm not an engineer, but I tend to agree with him. And at the end of the day, we can't fight this zoning, and that ship's sailed to Bill's point, so that is why my vote was yes as well, is I believe that this is a decent plan for what they want to do, and I believe that they have made accommodations to get this there. You know, the reason why we're here is irrelevant at this point, and that's the difficult part, I think, for all of us, is that we are against this, but, you know, to Mr. Box's point, that's not what we're arguing here. And they've done what they're supposed to do, it's what our code says, and if staff supports it, doesn't mean that I don't, but I don't really have a precedence to stand on a no vote tonight, so that's why my vote was yes. So, I hope that can help.
Well, in the interest of staying in the city charter, would you like to read the motion?
Yes, sir. "In the case of the application for..." "In the case of the application for preliminary plat submitted by David M. Box on behalf of Ashton Gray LLC and F. Berry Tap, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that the preliminary plat of Ashton Place be recommended to the city council for approval with the following additional conditions. That the storm sewer connecting to the existing roadway culvert will be coordinated during plan development to accommodate a future roadway."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
No.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. We are an unpaid volunteer citizen committee that speaks really with a heavy hand sometimes, because we represent 18,000 people in Yukon, and we do want to do what is best for the citizens. And we don't want the city council to ever think that we're down here rubber-stamping things and just throwing them up a week. Mr. Root, thanks for coming tonight, I do want you to know that when we send you things, we send them well-thought, so please pass that on to the, your fellow council members, thank you for coming. Any new business? Oh, I have one, one thing. Is the spelling of Gray Street on the plat G-R-E-Y? Should it not be G-R-A-Y? It's Ashton, Ashton Gray, and if Ashton is Ashton, then you would think that Mr. Gray would want his name spelled right, too. I'm just passing that along. As you know, nobody, everybody wants to be serious, and nobody wants to be a robock, okay? You've got to be old enough to know that joke, all right.
Mr. Chairman, we have no new business.
Any, any study sessions before the new year?
We are working on that, we will hopefully have something for the planning commission to start reviewing on our zoning updates. They are working on three chapters, is what we've been told, and hopefully we can forward on to you for review. One of the things that we discussed is accessory buildings as well, and metal buildings in being that, we are discussing that with them, so we would love to have your input on that. We got the other side that wants them, then we got the side that's questioning their location, so that's something we're going to definitely look at, because there has been some locations that have been allowed, so...
Our phones are ringing.
Yes, but it's something we will look at, so we'll want all your input on that. And any other issues you may see as we go forward, when you discuss that going forward to as well, before we get too far down the road. I think we're still the first quarter of next year for submitting it to review and approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Cindy, good to see you, welcome back. I'll just tick off the announcement, there is a bond election tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Please get out and vote.
If you don't even have to live in the city of Yukon, you have to live in the...
School district.
In the school district, so it is a school bond of great importance.
Took the words right out of my mouth. Perfect.
Same thing.
Right. No further business, I...